Thirty-one, and I'm going to call to order the regular meeting of the Neshoba Regional School Committee. We will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance, so please mute yourself, but you can rise and recite with us if you choose. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, so citizens' comments this evening, we have none, so we'll move on to the consent agenda, and I turn to Mike for a motion.
Okay. I'll move to approve the consent agenda of September twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-two, containing the meeting minutes of September fourteenth, two thousand twenty-two, and the warrants of September thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-two.
Do you have a second?
Second.
That was Rich. Thanks, Rich. Any discussion? Seeing them, we'll take the vote. I vote yes. Amy Vessels?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Maureen?
Yes.
Amy Cohen?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
I think I got everybody. Great. So that motion passes. Now we will move to the school committee chairperson update. I have nothing to share with you all beyond what is already on the agenda, so we'll move right on to the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Happy to be here tonight with you from Houston with my colleague Laura Friend as we are attending the Ed leader twenty-one conference, and we'll be bringing back some great practices to our school district. We're very excited about that, and you'll hear more about our experience in the future update. But what I want to begin tonight with is a great celebration. We have two guests, Ms. Thea Tully and Principal Joel Bates from Florence Sawyer School. And Thea has been bestowed a great honor to present at the National Social Studies Conference this year, and I want to turn it over to Principal Bates to offer sort of a description of this, as Miss Tully will be representing a whole collective of people from Florence Sawyer that contribute to a fabulous experience. Principal Bates?
Thank you, Superintendent Downing. And when Kirk says a number of people involved in this civics unit, he should include himself and Assistant Superintendent Friend who've participated from the beginning. So we all know that there are an infinite number of ways to present curriculum to students and to have them interact with learning. And Thea Tully, our eighth grade social studies teacher, has developed over a number of years an interactive civics unit in which students in each classroom work along a political continuum, the X and the Y and the Z parties, and confront the issues of the day and work with a team of students from the classes to learn about the issues, to support their candidate, to lobby. I don't know, what is it now, Thea? Over twenty different staff members in the building to to seek their approval and funding, which they then turn into campaign ads and support, which turns into a primary and then a general election. And it's one of our favorite events in our pre-K through eight school, incorporating a number of pre-K through eight staff, as Kirk mentioned, and we just couldn't be prouder of Thea for the opportunity to present this at a national conference, the National Council for the Social Studies in December. Thea?
Yes, yes, in December. Thank you. And I'm excited to go.
Well, I, Ms. Tully, on behalf of myself, our leadership team, entire school committee, we're proud of the work all the teachers at Florence Sawyer are doing, and that you get this trance to represent them. I tell you, friends, at the Ed leader twenty-one conference, we talked about all the interactive ways you can deliver important curriculum to students, and this project is an exemplary example of how to do that kind of work. So congratulations to you, Thea, and all those that go into the project.
Thank you, thank you. Thank you very much. I appreciate it. Have a great meeting, too. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Tully. And thank you, Principal Bates.
Thanks, everyone.
Next, I would like to invite our colleague, Ms. Lisa Gobeki, to come into the update, as she would like to update the committee on some of the efforts we're making this year regarding anti-vaping strategies in our school system. So Nurse Gobeki, take it from here.
Hi, thank you for having me. Good evening. So we had an opportunity, the high school, Janine Bulley was one that went to a conference and was really passionate about what she had to hear about an I Decide program, which is a drug education curriculum with intervention, diversion, and empowerment that was developed in collaboration between Mass General Hospital and Massachusetts Department of Public Health and the Institute for Health and Recovery. I Decide program aims to provide students experimenting with substances and/or who got caught using substances at school the knowledge, skills, and motivation necessary to make healthier decisions. We are, have applied and have been accepted. We're still waiting on training for staff, and we don't have an exact timeline of when this program will be up and running, and we will start at the high school. It is a program that can be offered from grades six through twelve. And we started, decided to look at it at just the high school at this point because we're not sure exactly when it was going to start. Opto surveys have gone out to parents and students regarding this, and I don't have that data as of yet because there's another survey that will go out on November seventh, I believe. In the meantime, we've still see vaping in the schools, and we have some concerns as well as the administration within the high school. We had a vaping diversion program that was developed several years ago when Jules and e-cigarettes became very popular very quickly within our communities and across the nation. With the pandemic of COVID, we did, that program was not up and running, for we had other things with hybrid learning. We weren't seeing the vaping as prevalent as it was prior to that. But now that we're back in school full force, we're seeing it again. So the administrative team at the high school has asked the nursing division to relook at the six-week vaping program that we developed back then. We did take a look at it, and we are revamping it now because we realized that substances have changed so much. When we developed the program, marijuana was not legal at the time, and we're seeing that with the vaping now, as well as we don't see Jules and e-cigarettes, they're not popular any longer, right? We really progressed over the several years that we were not doing the program. So we already had two students in the first and second week. This was the second week of the program. It is a six-week program, meaning five weeks of education and collaboration with students on the effects of vaping, and we added some substances in there. And then the sixth week, they will present to either administrative nursing personnel, both and or parents as well. This is the interim until the I Decide program comes to the high school, and we really felt it was important and passionate to do this as part of the curriculum and ask the students of the whys, right? Why are we vaping and why are we using substances? So that program has started last week, and as I said, we have two students enrolled right now. I want to say with hopes that we don't have many more because of vaping, but we're seeing a trend moving back up again with that. So we're going to support student and curriculum and administration with that until I Decide comes about. Thank you.
Thank you, Nurse Gobeki. And I would like to add that these types of educational programs are vital. We don't want to just punish kids. We want to educate them. We're an educational, a learning institution. And so those types of programs through the leadership of Nurse Gobeki and Dr. Boynton are going to be critical for the future. I'm going to pause there, Madam Chair, as those are our announcements today before we get into our strategic work and take any questions from the committee on the first two items.
All right, if anybody has any questions, let them be known. Mike?
Lisa, thank you for sharing that. I know that we have had our youth risk behavior surveys issued every two years, I think with the exception of two thousand twenty, is that right? Because of?
We actually did do it in two thousand twenty most other schools. We didn't get the collective data from the youth risk behavior survey because other schools did not complete it. We, however, did, but just got a synapse of what that was instead of a full report.
So I guess I'm wondering, I looked at the results from the most recent one, which is, I think, issued in August or April or sometime in the summertime, or at least the findings were compiled, and it said that we were at about nine percent reported vaping on a regular basis. And I'm wondering if that's higher or lower or consistent with where we were the last time we compiled this data. And I know that you said that vaping is on the rebound. And I recall a few years ago that this was a, almost felt like it was like reaching a critical level. And I'm wondering if we're still there or if we're sort of moderating a little bit, if we're rising?
So what the research is showing?
If I may interject for just a moment, Mr. Hares, you're asking some very important questions, and I might ask the Chair if the committee would like to have a more detailed presentation on those data sets to kind of get to the essence of the questions that Mr. Hares is asking, because I think we can probably come back and give a more comprehensive look at that. So you don't feel like you're chasing those questions.
Yeah, certainly not, certainly not wanting to put you on the spot. I apologize if that's.
Yeah, no, but Nurse Gobeki, certainly, I think you can speak to at least the specific question, but I'm just interjecting to say we are happy to come back and give a more detailed report. But Nurse Gobeki?
Yes. So when the, when the surveys were given out for the YRBS, we were still in a hybrid mode. So access to certain products, we're a little bit on the lower end. We kind of maintained a little bit from what our survey seen. You do see the intake up and down, and I have to agree with Superintendent Downing that to really take a deeper look at it and where we are, we're just, we're noticing without some of the data that we're finding students vaping more again now in school. And we're finding that. So as far as data themselves reporting, the data was done during a time of when COVID just started and then when it was kind of coming back. So we'd have to really look at the aggregate data for that. Great question, though. Thank you.
All right. Thank you again. I did not mean to put you on the spot.
Yeah, so I think that this is perhaps something we can put on a future planning calendar, is what I'm hearing, to get a more, a better understanding of what our students are doing and what programs we have in place and how we plan to respond.
That's my hope, Madam Chair, which is the reason why we put it into our announcements this week, because we want the community to know that we are taking steps immediately to start the school year, and we'll come back with more information.
Great. Any other questions, anyone, about the announcements? All right, looks like we can move on to the next section.
Great. So we'll talk about some of the strategic work that has been going on since our last meeting. The first item they have here is regarding the Ready Network. It's Racial Equity, Diversity, and Inclusion Foundation District Learning Series. This is a learning series put on by MASSS, which we had to apply, and our district was accepted. Myself, Ms. Friend, and our two directors will be going to the Ready Learning Series. And this is a series that's to help us study and dig deeper to understand how to help students, faculties, leaders navigate those challenges of building sustaining cultures and cultures of belonging in our school systems. So this is a learning opportunity for us, so we're going to dive straight into that work. And it's going to help and grow our perspectives and really help, I think, tune us in terms of what are the types of steps and strategies we can be looking at internally to assess our school system and as well as think about what are ways that we can ensure best practices for all students regarding those equitable outcomes, equitable opportunities for all students. And I'll pause there, as I believe the next items are items that Ms. Friend will be getting it to. So I'll take any questions if there are any regarding the Ready Network.
So I see Rich's hand.
Hi, Mr. Downing.
Hello.
Thanks. Good to see you. You're in Houston, is that right?
Yes.
Okay, great. So I was looking at this first topic, and I noticed under the strategic objectives, it's written that you're going, you aim to ensure equitable opportunities and outcomes. And I was wondering if you could just define what an equitable outcome is. You know, sometimes these things are written in, you know, higher education speak, and no, it wasn't exactly clear to me because, I mean, presenting equitable outcomes, I totally think that's great. But ensuring, I'm sorry, equitable opportunities, that is, but ensuring equitable outcomes, you know, there's going to be, I have kids in my family that are more math and science inclined, and another one that's more social studies. So they tend to have different outcomes, right, in grades, in different areas, based on their passions and stuff like that. And so maybe you could just clarify what you mean by that?
Yeah, and so I think that's an important question, Mr. Echol, and I'm glad you asked it. Because when we talk about equitable, we don't mean equal. We don't mean same. And as we think about what equitable opportunities are, it's access to all the learning opportunities across the scale of rigor that we have in our course across the school system. So if you want to take a deep look at what that looks like, because those, the outcomes that we're talking about aren't necessarily outcomes in terms of maybe a grade you get on an assignment or in a course. More, it's are you having equitable opportunities to access the types of pathways that then open doors for you in the future? So a pathway may be accessing high-level accelerated and advanced courses, AP courses. How do we do in terms of all of our student bodies, in particular our students of color, in looking at access to those courses? Because having those courses and success on those courses on your academic record provides you more opportunity to enter into higher institution and schools of your choice. So it's very nuanced, Mr. Echol, and I think, you know, it's a notion of if we're looking at the opportunities and we can foster those opportunities in the sense of belonging, the outcomes would be a byproduct showing that they're equitable outcomes, that's our accessing the pathways that they would hope to access.
Okay, thanks for clarifying.
You bet. And Mr. Echol, I really loved your question because along the work and in the Ready series that we're going to be participating in, it's going to bring us strategies on how we come back to our own system and work internally on how we define those terms. Because I think as we do that as a community, it's going to be very important for us to provide the definition and understanding, because that's the essence of empathy, is understanding another perspective and believing that perspective. So we'll be coming back with more information soon.
Okay, that's great. You know, I, I've, what stuck in my head was I did some professional development when I was teaching, and they talked about equitable grading, and they were recommending things like not giving homework because there's certain kids that won't be able to have time to do it at home. So I didn't, wasn't quite sure how this was going to play out, but I always assumed the good intent. I know we hire professionals, so thanks for clarifying.
You bet. Thank you, Ms. Echol.
Any other questions about the Ready PD? Oh, go ahead, Maureen.
Hi, yeah, I just had a question on what will that audit look like? Is that something that the district has to develop? Or does Ready assist in creating, creating what that, what that is?
Ms. Mazone, that's a great question. Ready Network is not us, that we're going there for a learning experience. They will not participate in an audit. But it is the network on which we are going to reach out and get the contacts of those that can come in and help us with our audit. So we're using that as the opportunity to do some mining on some organizations that could come in. We've done some early testing of what that would look like, and it can get quite pricey. So we're looking for fiscally responsive audits to bring to our system at the same time of looking deeply at our work and.
All right.
Great, thank you.
You bet.
All right, looks like we can move on to the next section.
I think at this point, I'd like to turn it over to our Assistant Superintendent, Ms. Laura Friend, so she can.
I'm ready. I'm ready. I'm unmuted. Thank you, Superintendent Downing. We have three updates from the Department of Teaching and Learning for the committee. We've been busy. All three of the updates support work relative to our second objective in the strategic plan, and that is learning, teaching, and leading, with the third update further supporting strategic objective number four, and that's focused on strengthening a shared leadership model that Superintendent Downing has spoken about. So to dig in, the first update or topic number two provides an update on Renaissance learning. Superintendent Downing spoke about our addition of Renaissance, specifically Star Math and Star Reading at our school committee meeting on the fourteenth. Star Math and Star Reading are adaptive online assessments within Renaissance that are going to provide our teachers with tools for their educator toolbox. Star Math and Star Reading will be administered to all students, K to nine in math and K to eight in reading three times a year, fall, winter, and spring. What's unique for us about the implementation of STAR is that is, this is going to mark a critical juncture for us in that this will be the first time our teachers have tools that are adaptive in nature, meaning that the assessments meet students where they are at, adjusting in complexity based on student responses, and providing diagnostic information about students' relative areas of strength and areas of growth for targeted instructional purposes. Renaissance and STAR will provide our teachers with real-time, easy-to-access data altogether in a system that's universal, providing an opportunity for us to identify learners in need and learners ready for acceleration and enrichment. So supporting our teachers' implementation of STAR, we know, is critical. And the Department of Teaching and Learning has been working very hard to provide our teachers with professional development through a train-the-trainer model. We have a second training coming up on October eighteenth, where we are going to look at digging into the data and focusing on the most important part is now what. So we have provided teachers with resources as well to support the launch, and we'll continue to make ourselves available for any and all questions. And we recognize that this marks a shift in practice for our teachers and that it will be critical for us to be fully committed to supporting them for successful implementation. We also recognize it's important for us to communicate with our families. So today, we have worked to provide our families with two updates on Renaissance this year, including the most recent update last Friday in the Common with a family FAQ. We will look forward to sharing the data from STAR with families because we know our families are wondering, right? When am I going to hear about the data about my child? So we will be looking forward to sharing data with our families in the context of a larger assessment data system or assessment portfolio during our upcoming parent-teacher conferences and during other scheduled meeting times. So it's important to emphasize that the information from STAR is one data point. It's an important data point, but it's one data point in a larger assessment portfolio, right? Our teachers are already doing a great job with assessing our learners. This is going to even further strengthen our practice. So one data point in a larger, a larger picture with the whole student in mind. We are growing and learning here this year with our implementation. We recognize this. We recognize the value in implementing universal screeners, and we will be committed to updating the committee throughout the school year on our progress and our next steps as a release to our implementation. Should I move on?
Yes, Ms. Friend, why don't you finish your next two pieces, then we'll take questions.
So the second topic, or topic number three, is related to our Bridges implementation, and that is our new K to five math curriculum. Implementation is well underway as we step into October. Bridges in Mathematics, I know, was presented to the committee last year, but as a means of review, it's a comprehensive and rigorous math curriculum that supports students' deep understanding of concepts, proficiency with key skills, and the ability to solve complex problems. As with anything new, implementation requires support. To this end, we have conceptualized multiple facets of support for our teachers, which will extend throughout this school year. This is a priority for us, for our elementary teachers, in ensuring that we're providing them with professional development and ongoing coaching and support throughout this year to support the implementation of our new math curriculum. So some steps we have taken so far are providing professional development for teachers and administrators, including principals and assistant principals, developing a Bridges Success Team, which is a team comprised of teacher leaders at each grade level, instructional coaching in the classroom from Karen Bouver, our math curriculum lead, and the creation of a teacher landing page with quick links, pacing guides, and helpful resources, unit by unit. Future plans to support implementation include ongoing communication with our educators and our special educators to monitor implementation needs and further training from the Math Learning Center involved with deepening implementation pathway to strengthen and support and refine our instructional practices and planning. Our next early release on October twenty-first will provide teachers with professional development from the Math Learning Center to be utilized for digging into a unit. So we're looking forward to that on October twenty-first. And then the final update from Teaching and Learning for the week is related to a high school-specific work. And this is exciting. We have engaged with Nezdek to bring Dr. Tony Bent onsite to the high school to present a custom-designed seminar series on building collective leadership capacity with our high school leadership team. And the focus of this work is going to focus on leveraging positive school transformation. And the focus of this work is going to focus on leveraging positive school transformation as we work to implement our strategic plan, our visioning work, and the lifting and the integration of our portrait of a Nishober graduate competencies in the classroom. Dr. Bent will lead and facilitate a six-part seminar series with Dr. Boynton, our high school assistant principals, our dean of students, and all of our department chairs. Dr. Bent is an active, seasoned, and inspiring mentor for school and district leaders, and we're looking forward to bringing him into our fabric to help us strengthen our practices for both our building administrators and our teacher leaders. In April, we look forward to sharing the outcomes of this unique learning opportunity with the committee as well.
All right, thanks, Laura. And I do see some hands up, so I think we'll move to questions, if that's okay, Kirk?
Indeed, indeed, thank you.
All right, I saw Karen's hand first. Go ahead, Karen.
Thank you. I have my questions about the Renaissance learning and the I'm really excited that the district is moving in this direction. My question is, I know it can do benchmark assessments. It also will progress monitor, correct? Okay, so my question is, if we get this great data, data is only so helpful if it's sort of in a vacuum, right? So the teams need time to analyze that data and look at their progress monitoring and make sure that the strategies and the implementation of their program is being effective and then make adjustments. So that can involve regular ed, special ed, literacy, whoever's involved in that. So is there is there time set aside for those teams to meet on a regular basis? Because I know that's really, really complicated to put together in a day. And then you're talking multiple grade levels needing to do this on a regular basis. I'm just curious if that's in the works, or is that not yet, but coming, kind of where things stand with that?
So I'll go ahead and work to answer that question. You're absolutely right. We know that the lift is not in the implementation and the administration of the assessment. It's now we have this data, and we have this data in the collection of a larger assessment portfolio. Now what? So we are building our capacity in terms of looking at the data and using it in data to inform our instructional next steps as teachers and leaders. So currently, we're working with our building principals to be even further intentional with the way we use time to allow our teacher teams to look systematically at the data. So we're growing in this, and we're building capacity as we're working through our implementation. So we are right there with our mindset in terms of need, and we are growing towards actualization of that model.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Mike.
Thank you. I'm going to start off by tipping my proverbial hat to the superintendent and the Assistant Superintendent for identifying the strategic objectives and initiatives for everything that's on that update. I mean, that's really, really helpful to tie it back to the strategic plan. It gives the plan teeth, and it also gives, you know, some of the contents of the update some teeth too. So kudos to you. That's really fantastic. My question sort of overlaps with what Karen was asking, so if there's some commonality, forgive me, but it is a little bit different. You know, you were talking about, you know, developing this professional learning community model within the district, and I'm wondering if the data from Renaissance learning will be archived in a place where not only does it help to inform how we can address the needs of individuals, but also on a class-wide basis, and then sort of longitudinally from year to year, how our changes in practice have impacted the results that we're seeing. If we sort of feed this database year after year, then we've got this really big data set that we can reflect back on and say, here's how, here's why we're changing, here's why we're taking these new initiatives at our school, or here's how we're modifying our approach. Is that something that we're considering doing as well, or is that, am I kind of off-base and extrapolating?
You're absolutely on target. So yes, 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 yes. And there are other facets of Renaissance that were not addressed in this update, and that includes other components that we will be integrating with our practice, specifically STAR Custom, which is a tool that our teachers will be able to use to design specific assessments on specific skills based on the information from the screeners to use with a class for pre-assessment, for example, or for targeted instruction in terms of progress monitoring. As well, another element of Renaissance is a data dashboard, and that's called Schoolzilla. And the data that dashboard provides a snapshot of data based at the individual level, at the student level, at the class level, at the grade level, at the school level, at the longitudinal level in a really user-friendly way to digest the data. So you know that I always speak from my teacher heart, right? And so we want our teachers to be exercising their mental energy on the now what, not in pulling together all of the data to make sense of the data. We want them to be able to have the data in front of them, all the different components of the data, so that they can make the important decisions of now what do we do with the data? Do we need to provide targeted instruction for a group of students? Do we need to go back and look at our curriculum? Do we need to revisit the way we've approached this instructionally? Our hope is that these tools will provide teachers with easy-to-access data to help make those important decisions and our school leaders as well. And yes, the data is archived, so we'll be able to look at student growth over time, over time, from the beginning of the year to the end of the year, from one year to the next. Super powerful.
That is dynamite.
Thanks, Laura. Let's go over to Amy Vessels.
Hi, my question is actually about how the data will be shared with families. So I guess I'm wondering, you know, I mean, I'm sure you'll be saying, oh, maybe your kid is struggling with this part of reading comprehension, or whatever it may be. But are you going to be providing any kind of like like a guide or something for families so they could know, okay, how can I take that data? And then if I'm reading with my kid at home, what kind of questions could I be asking? Or, you know, I'm trying to say like, how could I be helping with the thing that you're seeing in the classroom? I guess I'm wondering about that, that kind of interface between like school and home about the data.
Yes, we are working on that right now and working with our teachers on how to talk with families about the data and what it means in terms of practice from the parental lens. And it's critical for us to remember too that this data, while it's going to be so useful, it's one data point in a larger set of data. And there are multiple facets of data, so we are working to support our teachers with being able to articulate that for our families. So we're not looking at just one slice of time. We're triangulating the data. We're looking at this data in conjunction with this data with this data so that we can share that data with our families in an informed way that makes sense and so that we can take next steps in terms of instructional practice. And we know that our families want to support from home too. So yes, we're working on that, and our teachers will have that information for parent-teacher conferences in the fall.
Great, thank you.
I would like to add on to that is just for an element of grace out there in the community. Remember, our Lancaster schools, this is the second time around the track for them, as they were part of the pilot last for the rest of the school system. This is their first experience as well. So they're on a learning curve to understand those things as well. And so the good thing about that is every time we look at it, we get just a little bit stronger. And over time, it has that spiraling effect.
Amy Cohen.
Thank you. Amy Vessels asked half of my question, which was about sharing out the data with the parents and families. But the other part of my question had to do with what targeted instruction might look like as a result of using this program and how that would does that have any effect on the curriculum that's, you know, the pacing? Or maybe you could just speak a little bit more about the targeted instruction piece?
So that's a great question. And as Superintendent Downing just mentioned, we're growing, right? In our understanding and in terms of the capacity of the tool as we work through this school year, the assessment is directly aligned with the Massachusetts State Frameworks. And so our teachers will have available to them different kinds of reports after the administration of the assessment for their students. And the reports show specific skills and concepts related to the Massachusetts Frameworks. So a teacher could take a report and see, for example, I'll use an ELA example, that questions around maybe identifying main idea or theme and can look at it in a couple of different ways as this small group of students is really demonstrating solid understanding of main idea and theme. They are ready to take it to the next level. So when thinking about crafting lesson plans for the next unit, say, the teacher's going to have this information that this group of students is ready for something a little bit more accelerated. So the teacher could use that information to inform his or her or their unit planning for the future. A teacher could use the data to inform their instructional practice as a whole class or even a grade level. So if you've given the assessment and you see, wow, our students did not perform as well as I had anticipated based on where we are at with our learning and our unit, I need as a teacher to go back and reteach this in a different way because they didn't get it. So the information could be used at the individual level, small group level, or at the larger level. Hope that answers your question.
Yeah, thank you. It did. Thanks.
All right, Maureen.
Hi, Laura. I had a question on the Bridges program. I know you mentioned that the Bridges success teams are going to be by grade level. I'm just wondering if there's any connectivity across the different towns, or is it kind of, there's a team in Stowe, there's a team in Bolton, and a team in Lancaster all working together?
So the latter, the latter is the yes. So we are definitely embracing a model of bringing the district together with all of our work. So the success team leaders are representative teacher leaders at each grade level for the entire district. And the work had begun already with Karen Bouvet in the spring of last year and then in the summer. So these teacher leaders are digging in, preparing materials and lessons, and sharing it with all of the teachers across the district at that grade level. So everyone has equal access to all of the materials. And it's a great model because we can hear directly from the teachers what is needed, what is going well, what further supports do we need to provide? So yes, it's a district-wide model.
Great. I have one quick question for you, Laura. One is just clarifying, one is a little probing. How many times did they do this benchmark testing in Renaissance per year?
Three.
Three times a year?
So that's the benchmark. So that a teacher could use STAR Custom to further probe based on the information from the screeners. Could use STAR Custom as a pre-assessment tool for the whole class, or could use STAR Custom to provide administration of an assessment to measure student progress relative to progress monitoring. But the baseline is three.
Is three. Awesome. And then I guess my probing question is, do you know why they only go up to eighth grade? And is there any data collection plans for our high school learners?
So the assessment actually goes through grade 12. So the questions become sophisticated? And math, well, let me rephrase, grade 12 for literacy and grade 10 for math. So the questions in math go through geometry. So that provides our teachers with information really about lots of possibilities there in terms of longitudinal, like conception of the curriculum longitudinally. And not related to your question, but we have talked about it with our teachers is for some of our students, answering questions that they've never seen before can be pretty scary, right? And so it's important for our teachers to communicate with our students. You're going to see questions maybe that you've never seen before, and it's okay. We're getting to know you as a learner and where to meet you and your needs. So it's okay. So that might feel a little bit uncomfortable for some of our students, but we know that over time, and as our students become more used to the assessment, it'll just become part of what we do.
And so do you imagine that eventually we'll do, especially the literacy testing, beyond eighth grade?
I think we'll take a look at our implementation this year and then make, you know, informed decisions moving forward. Our ninth graders are taking the math assessment. So we'll see. We'll see what the data shows us, and we will be responsive to that in terms of our next steps as it relates to implementation.
Great. I see Sharon's hand. Go ahead, Sharon.
I'm wondering if you can describe a little bit what those assessments look like? Because I'm hearing, you know, benchmark assessments three times a year, but then there's opportunity for individualizing the assessment or using it for pre-assessment. I think it's a great tool, and I think it's really exciting as a tool for collecting data. But I'm also hearing this assessment, 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 and it's starting to feel like there's a big focus on testing and gathering assessment data. I'm just wondering if you can, what do those assessments look like for kids?
So I will reframe my language and say, this is really a screener, right? And in the communication that we've shared with our staff is this is not, this looks different than an assessment that is MCAS-focused or a high-stakes assessment, or even different than an end-of-the-unit assessment, because it's adaptive in nature and meets the students where they are at, at their independent level. The screener is short. It's about 20 to 30 minutes. Doesn't take a lot of time. It is multiple choice, and I'm speaking frankly, can be lend a pretty critical lens on assessments. How can an assessment that's 20 to 30 minutes in a multiple-choice format really provide us with information that's going to help us with instructional decisions? And the answer is the questions are solid, they're spot-on, and they are complex in a way that is pretty impressive and does provide information that can provide our teachers with diagnostic information to inform next steps. So short, meets the students at their independent level, and is not, these are not assessments that are are duplicitous of an assessment like MCAS is a screener. So, like I said, this is, this is new for us and something that we've never had in our arsenal, our assessment toolbox. So our teachers are excited, and they're excited to have the data and, and have easy access to the data as are we. So we will, we're monitoring progress and implementation and hearing from the teachers about the needs and how it's going. And then we will be responsive and adaptive based on what they're telling us. But this is different than any other kind of assessment that we have implemented or are already implementing, and certainly definitely different than our high-stakes statewide assessment.
I would like to add on to that, that our early literacy and early math assessments are one-minute assessments to look at what are those foundational skills on literacy and mathematics. And they also meet the requirements from the state in terms of the dyslexia screeners that we need to do. So they meet a mandate as well as provide us the valuable information that Ms. Ben spoke about.
Great. All right, everybody. So
Can I ask a quick follow-up?
Oh, sure Sharon.
Are they, are they all online or it's all computer-based screening? Yes?
I can answer that. The early literacy screeners that Superintendent Downing was just mentioning can be administered either way. They can be administered on paper or online or in a hybrid fashion based on student readiness and student. The Star Reading and the Star Math are intended to be administered online for the older students.
Great. That's so much information Laura, and your explanations are so
I hope so.
Yes.
I'm happy to come back around, and we'll continue to keep everyone updated as we move forward.
Clearly so important to all of us. It's really about our kids' learning. So very authentic stuff. Thanks so much.
Leah, would it be, would it be, would it be wise to think of this like a thermometer? Right? It's not an assessment in that it's really just taking the temperature of the student on a particular lens, right? On this, or this, or this?
Yeah.
I think using the word "assessment" seems to, I think that's what people are getting hung up on.
Yeah, I like, I like screener. I think that being a screener is a good way to look at it. And it's there to kind of trigger educators to provide differentiation to, you know, for each individual kid and what they need at a young age. So those really important interventions can be done quickly. So great. We're gonna move away from the superintendent's report now and over to new business. And, let's see here, I wonder, because our district leaders are at a conference right now, without objection, I'd like to move the school committee goals discussion down to a part of the agenda after they leave us. Would anybody object to that? So that now we will just move to a conversation around the need to add a pop-up meeting, a special meeting. And the agenda says October 18th, but we were just advised today by our design team that October 19th would actually be a better option. And Joe, if you wouldn't mind, do you want to give a little bit of update on this pop-up meeting and what it will be?
Yes. Thank you, Madam Chairman. So I'm going to, with your permission, Madam Chair, just give a little bit of my report as part of the explanation here. So there are some additional matters that I will address at that part of the agenda. But as far as the 19th is concerned, the school building committee met on the 20th of September, and at that meeting, we were provided with five design options for the new high school. Four of them are new bills, and one is an addition renovation design scheme. So what we need to do is, we're under the gun right now. Our deadline is October 27th, where we need to submit a local actions and approval, approved, approval certification regarding our preferred schematic report and recommended design. So right now, there was actually at the meeting on the 20th, there was a PowerPoint presentation provided by our architect. It has not been made part of the building, meeting materials as of yet. I will effort that tomorrow with KBA. In the meantime, I do have, I did receive from our OPM, five, the five designed, find the five recommended design options. And what I will do is, I will provide those five recommended design options to all of the committee members who are not part of the SBC. So you have that at least to look at as we move forward. So what we need to do on the 18th of October is the SBC student meeting again on the 18th, at which point, we are going to vote to approve the preferred schematic report and the recommended option to the district committee. We'd originally planned to have three meetings that night. Two meetings would be of the SBC, one would be the, the actual substantive meeting, then we have a subsequent meeting to approve our minutes of that meeting. And then we were going to have a school committee meeting at that time, where you would then vote to approve the preferred schematic report and the design option. But we're going to have that meeting with the committee's indulgence on the 19th. What the OPM and the architect need are actual certified minutes. So this is why I was sort of compressing everything into a short period of time. Our second meeting in October is the 26th, so we can approve the meetings of the 19th that evening, and we can have them prepared and certified for submission the next day through the OPM. So what I would request of the committee is, and we're trying to try and keep the meeting on the 18th to a tight 60 minutes or so. So if you have some time on the 18th to zoom in, all our meetings are Zoom, and hear what we're going to be discussing, this is kind of another one of those watershed moments for the building committee. So at this point, we're clearly leaning towards a new build as opposed to an addition and renovation. Which design option we will choose, that will be determined on the 18th. So I think that pretty much spells it out, Madam Chair, and the necessity of this meeting and the importance thereof. Thank you.
Thanks so much, Joe. As always, completely on top of it. We can talk more about the substance of what just, of what Joe just explained later at his subcommittee report. For right now, this agenda item is just to schedule a pop-up meeting, and to clarify that pop-up meeting would be on October 19th. And Joe, correct me, well, I guess the motion will read the timing. Mike, what is the proposed time in the motion? Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, 6:30?
6:30. So that is what we are going to move on right now. So Mike, I'll turn it over to you.
Sure. I'll move to hold a remote school committee meeting on October 19th, 2022 at 6:30 PM, to vote to accept the recommendation of the NRSD School Building Committee to authorize Skanska USA, the owner's project manager, to submit the preferred schematic report on the Massachusetts School Building Authority, sorry, to the Massachusetts School Building Authority on behalf of the Shobor Regional School District no later than October 27th, 2022.
I'll second that motion. Okay, Joe. Joe, you get it.
Thank you.
Joe, second it. Thank you, Joe. Any discussion on this pop-up meeting?
Yeah, I have a quick question. Will the decision basically have been made on the 18th? And will it be a quick discussion on the 19th? Or is it going to be a long type of meeting like this on the 19th?
So that meeting on the night, that's okay, totally get it. The 19th meeting will be virtual. It will be a one-item agenda meeting. And Joe has asked all of us to tune in to the 18th so that we have a good understanding of why the, the one option was decided upon at that previous meeting. Although we will have opportunity for discussion on the 19th, I imagine it could take, knowing us, 45 minutes?
Okay. Yeah, that's very helpful. Thank you.
So these things happen, and I apologize to all of you for taking your time, your precious time. But any more discussion before we approve or don't approve? All right, let's take the vote. So Amy Cohen?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Sharon?
Yes.
Maureen?
Yes.
Amy Vessels?
Yes.
Myself, yes. And Joe?
Yes.
All right, so the motion passes, and we will add that to the calendar October 19th at 6:30 to approve the preferred schematic report, Joe. That's what it's called?
Yeah, it's called the preferred schematic report, and it will include our chosen building option.
So that is indeed a watershed moment. So big things happening on the 18th and the 19th, but Joe, we'll talk more about that a little bit later. All right, guys. So our next topic here is to do a first reading of policy IMG, Animals in Schools. This is a policy that is in the meeting materials, that the policy subcommittee worked on to basically do that policy shift that our school resource officer needs in order to move forward with the proposal she asked us to, to kind of consider at the last meeting and that we're voting on tonight. So with that said, can I turn it over to you Karen or Amy Vessels? Because I think Amy, you were more in charge of this particular one. And just give us some background? Anything in particular? Like what, what's the general ad here? Do you remember?
Yeah, the, it's just the whole second part of it there that they added and read about therapy dogs. That was, it was just added to that existing policy that they had for animals in schools. So yeah, it's that whole second half is new.
Kirk, is there anything that you want to say? I do see that Lisa is still here, or either of you could weigh in on it?
Yeah, I, Nurse Rebecca stayed around for this particular item as well. Lisa, do you want to address why we're extending those policy?
Sure. Yeah, it's just, I'm sorry, I just, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, my screen just went and then it came back. So I apologize. It was kind of freaked me out a little bit. But so we, the policy as it stands, addressed service dogs and then other animals in the classroom. And what's, and therapy dogs are becoming very popular in schools. We've had one in the past at the high school that came in on occasions to read in the library, you know, with students and stuff. And, and the guidelines go a little bit different based on a service dog versus a therapy dog. And that's why we wanted to add this in there. So for the future, moving forward, if we bring other therapy dogs in, we already have a policy on it. Service dogs fall under the American Disabilities Act, and we, there's certain regulations that we cannot ask for, but they're servicing just one student. Where a therapy dog is for multiple students. So we really should have some structures in place. Therapy dogs have to be trained, have to show proof of training, liability insurance, immunization vaccine status, where service dogs do not. We're not by law allowed to ask those questions or obtain those documentations, which is why we wanted to put it in here. And then it also gives the superintendent the authority in the future if we have other therapy dogs, whether it be in middle school or high school, which we're seeing multiples across Massachusetts and the, in the country of the therapy nature of them, helping students with anxiety, mental health issues, et cetera. So we just really wanted to add it in there to make sure that we're checking all those boxes off.
Thanks, Lisa. So Amy and Karen, if there's any, if there are any questions or concerns now, perhaps you can be on the ready to jot those down so that your subcommittee can take it back up in the next go-around? Are there any questions or comments? Oh, I think I saw two hands at once. Let's go to Maureen and then to Joe.
Hi, I have two questions. The first one is basically like, how was this written? Is this like a guideline from someone? I do see a legal reference, so I'm not sure if someone just put it together, or if it's a template that we used?
It was, it was a template. I researched other school districts across Massachusetts that had the same exact policy from the, you know, MASC, and ones that had added therapy dogs. It was, it was overall, overall the same language in all of them. So I did not create it. It came from others. This particular one came from Clinton Public Schools down the road. But when I looked at others, the language was there. So somebody had already done their research on it, and it seemed like all schools were following the same suit.
Got it. Okay. And then my second question was on the insurance. I know that there's no cost to the district for this, but will we have to change our insurance policy at all to be able to have the dog in our schools? Because I see under insurance, it does list the three separate towns shall maintain an insurance policy that provides liability coverage. Do we know if that changes the policy that we currently have?
I'm not sure if it changes the policy that we currently have, but talking about therapy dogs, it would be that, as far as Officer Casey, I'm going to say Hull, but I know that's not her last name any longer. She got married. I apologize. Murray Murphy, something like that. I apologize. I believe Bolton was going to provide that for her. And that's why we left the language as Bolton, Lancaster, and Stowe would be liable for that based on future therapy dogs. And who would be responsible for that?
So Bolton is going to be the holder of the liability insurance?
Correct.
Okay. All set, Maureen? Yeah. Okay, Joe, go for it.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Actually, Ms. Moroney just stole a little bit of my thunder because I was going to ask a little bit about the insurance and about the cost. So when we went through this last week, and I'm just going to preface my remarks by saying that I have absolutely no objection to therapy dogs being in our school district. But my understanding was that the dog that we're getting for the high school, that's going to be the property, and I know that term may offend people, but pets are still considered chattels, by the town of Bolton, and that the town of Bolton would essentially cover all the expenses attended to the canine. They would cover the insurance, and I believe there's the veterinary services would be provided on a donation basis, and that when the dog is not on school property, the, the school resource officer would be responsible for feeding the dog, caring for the dog, and transporting the dog back and forth to the vet. So I don't think there's much of cost. And just, and again, this is probably, I'll just make a comment in regards to the insurance, and I assume that Mr. Mulcarren and Ms. Moroney would be the better person to ask this. But I would assume that if we have liability insurance, we'd simply just add a rider for a service dog or a service animal in the property in addition to the insurance that's covered by the town of Bolton. But I did notice on the proposed policy that says the towns of Bolton, Lancaster, and Stowe shall maintain an insurance policy. I know it's a minor point, but where does the town of Lancaster or the town of Stowe approve the maintenance of an insurance policy for service animals in our school district? Or is that just there in anticipation that our towns will in fact approve that? Because the town of Bolton has already said they're going to, this is their dog, and they're going to have to insure it. But, yeah.
Mr. Gleason, the way I read that, and you have expertise in this area, so I always appreciate your guidance, with the clause earlier that says with the superintendent's approval, that would be the due diligence I'm required to go through to ensure approval. So I would call, if it was one of our schools in Stowe, I would call the Stowe manager in, get the information so that I can make an approval according to the policy.
Thank you, Ms. Superintendent.
Any other questions on this first reading? All right, so it seems we will bring it for a second reading at the next meeting, next real, regularly scheduled meeting, which will be in person, by the way. So thanks, Amy and Karen for working that up for us. Back to my agenda. All right, so that's it for new business with the school committee goals discussion being pushed down further. Our student representative report is next. And unfortunately, Dan Abbe is not able to be with us tonight because he's under the weather. So we look forward to having him at the next meeting. And Dan, FYI, it's in person. So hopefully you can be with us by then. So to unfinished business, we have a policy extravaganza about to happen here. And I would like to hand this over to our policy subcommittee chairperson, Karen. Karen, do you want to just walk us through each one of these?
Sure. So the first one is JJIF, the concussion policy. So this is the second read for this. And I do want to note And I do want to note, just trying to find the exact spot here. There was a question in our first reading, there was like a, it said to return to play as quickly as possible, kind of on its own. And I went back into our manual to see what the story was with the original. And it actually looks like when the red line was originally made, it just an extra return was inserted because it's just the continuation of the of the sentence above. So I fixed that so that it now all flows, because I know that was a little bit confusing. Yep, so this is really, they were pretty minor changes to this policy. It was more that it's updated every two years instead of annually. And a piece about online registration. So that was that was really it for that. For that. So there's any questions on the policy as it stands now?
Alright, so we can take a motion for that one. Mike?
Okay, I will move to adopt revised policy JJIF as presented.
I'll second that. Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll take the roll.
One quick question is, um, forgive me, I was catching up on, is this, there was a typo in the red line of one of these policies. Alright, let's just take the vote. We can always amend if we need to.
Okie dokie. Amy Vessels?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Maureen?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Sharon?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Karen?
Yep.
Rich?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
Amy Cohen?
Yes.
Alright. So that is now a new policy for our manual. Thank you very much. Let's move over to the next one, the JJIFR. Is that right, Karen?
Yep, that's correct. So these are the regulations around concussions and I know Amy Cohen, you had had some questions about some of it. So Lisa, I don't, good Lisa's still here. So Lisa, I had sent you an email just with what Amy had a question on. Since it's a regulation document, I didn't really want to start adjusting things in it. So Amy, do you want to, since Lisa's here, did you want to ask her that that question? But I didn't make a change to the document because I felt like I really didn't want to do that without Lisa having a chance to respond and give her input to that piece. So Amy, I don't know if you want to ask her now?
Yeah, sure. I'm happy to. Thank you. My question was just that reading through the this document and I, you know, I don't really understand where the origins were. So if this is kind of came from another place and you're just, if it's something that's already out there and we're using it, that's fine. But I was reading through, I think it's item number four on page three about any athlete who is symptomatic, but is stable is allowed to go home with his or her parents and guardian or guardians following the head injury. And I was, I just felt like part of what was described in items A, B, and C was redundant, but like not totally consistent. And it was really the essence of my comment was that I didn't understand why the regulation had different language regarding whether the head injury occurred at practice or at a game. Because if I'm the parent, I just really wanted to understand like what's expected of me and it didn't really make sense the way it was broken out.
Yep, it it came straight from the MASC policy that they provided to schools. And we kept that in there. So Tanya Rich is here as well because we worked on it, you know, diligently together on this to just make sure that it was updated per policy. And so Tanya, if you want to speak more of that, but it did come from MASC directly.
Yes, when we started this, we took a template from NISC, which is what the majority of schools have. And so Lisa and I just worked off of that. We only changed a few things to reflect some of the changes we've made recently regarding the baseline testing we're using and also the online registration. So when we first started the concussion policy, we actually did hard copies for all of our registration, hard copy concussion history and medical history. So we've just with technology, we've changed a few things, but this is all based off the MASC template when we first started the concussion policy.
Okay, that's that's fair enough. It's, I don't think it's really, go ahead, Leah.
I just wonder if we're looking at number four, I think Amy, what you're talking about is number four, A and B. Right?
Yeah, I mean, it says if the head injury occurs at practice, parents, guardians will immediately be notified, must come and pick up the student athlete and talk to the certified athletic trainer in person. B, if the injury occurs at a game or event, the student athlete may go home with the parents, garden, guardians after talking with the certified athletic trainer. Like, what's the, I don't understand why those are parsed out.
So I feel like, I feel like what it might be assuming is that parents are at games.
That's exactly it.
And I think that that's
That's why I'm confused.
That's probably, that's probably a bad assumption. Maybe not at Neshoba, but it's it's perhaps not a great assumption to make that parents are going to be at the games. And so would you, would everyone, I wonder if there is, and Tanya, you tell me and Lisa too, if if you guys need to expedite this and we are really slowing you down, please speak up and tell us that. But we could just make A and B more similar. Right? Like if if a if a head injury occurs at a practice or a game, parents and guardians will be immediately notified and must come pick up their student athlete and talk to the certified athletic trainer. I mean, wouldn't it be simpler?
That's exactly the language that I sent to Karen that I think she forwarded to Lisa. So.
Lisa and Tanya, would that be an okay change to make?
I think so.
I think so. I think it's just where they separated. One was indicating if a parent wasn't there, what would happen? The other one is if a parent is there, it's going to happen and just say, we're going to call and immediately pick them up. If they're already there at the game, I think that's why they separated it. You know, if you're already there at the game, we don't have to notify you to pick them up because you're already there.
Right, right. But I mean, I don't go to all my kids' games and and he actually got a concussion at an away meet. And I and I wasn't actually notified for a while just because of circumstance, because the coach is taking care of fifty other kids. So I think, you know, there is some need to not assume that parents are at every game, ones that are far away especially. So I think maybe Karen and Amy, could we ask you guys to maybe combine A and B and eliminate that assumption?
Practice or a game.
Yeah. If we put that aside, guys, any other questions or comments on this while we have our experts here?
Madam Chairman, I have a question.
Go ahead, Joe.
Thank you. Sorry, I couldn't get my hand raised fast enough. And I'm only going to frame this question in a yes or no fashion to Ms. Rich through you, Madam Chair, because we're here talking about the concussion protocols, which I think are vitally important to all of our student athletes. I was just wondering, and again, so the yes or no response is all that need. Does the MASC provide any other types of model policies for other types of potential inflictions for our student athletes? I'm speaking mostly about heat stroke. I would think that heat stroke and concussions are the two biggest issues for our athletes and our athletic training staff. So is are the concussions sort of a an island on their own? Or is there a body of regulations that address certain other types of injuries, specifically heat stroke?
Uh, Mr. Gleason, I'll answer. I'm not aware of any others.
Something for the future, perhaps. Maureen?
I'm trying to find it, but I can't find it. Do we know if this policy has been updated by the MASC after two thousand eleven? Because I know that's the last template we're using. That's just something to check if we are going back and making changes to see if they updated their template since two thousand eleven.
I'm going to assume that this is the most up to date version, but maybe Karen and Amy, you could just double check that for us. Yeah, thanks, Maureen. Rich?
I was just going to say, as a former high school coach, you're required to take first aid, Joe. Like that addresses heat stroke and, you know, sprains and stuff like that, even CPR. So I think they probably rely on that training. Food for thought.
Thanks, Rich. Maureen, is your golden hand up again or is just?
Nope, I forgot to take it down. Sorry.
Oh, no worries. Go ahead, Amy Cohen.
Yeah, I just have one more question about section nine, which is the parent guardian responsibilities. And it says that item two is inform the school if student sustains a concussion concussion outside of school hours, complete new concussion history form following a new injury. Is that a form that parents get from the school district or from the pediatrician? Or is that provided to the parents when they notify the school? Because I had a student who had a concussion from something outside of school, but I wasn't aware of this form. So.
How do we, is, are there protocols internally for this? I'm sure there are. And maybe I'm directing this question to Kirk more so than Lisa and Tanya.
Pardon me, Madam Chair, I was writing a note there.
That's okay. We're we're basically, I think, wondering, kind of, I'm sure you guys have very clear protocols on steps that the nurse's office takes, how they alert teachers and all that collaboration. But there's a form specifically. So can you talk a little bit about that, too?
Yeah, there, those are all of our regular health and safety protocols for day to day operations on on injuries. And so, yes, they're well trained. They go over that with faculty and staff, actually, at the beginning of the year when they do all their universal precautions trainings and various, so yes, those.
And so is that form that this thing is referencing, Lisa, is that something that we're going to introduce or is it something that we already do?
It's something that we already do. It's a return to play. We, it 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 depends on where the forms come from or where they generate. So if, and that's only if we receive the information sometimes, right? So sometimes if it's a concussion that helps outside of school, most pediatricians and parents will send that that note in saying that this child had a concussion. The nurses receive that note, they share it with, and Tanya, if I'm incorrected any of this, please jump in, but I'm sorry, my
Do we lose her?
Oh, I think we lost her.
Tanya, you might need to jump in.
Okay, so I know on the athletic piece, we do, everything is online. So if a student gets a concussion, the history is on the online form. And usually these forms come in numerous versions because they come from the doctor's office. So Amy, in your situation, if your child has a concussion, you're getting a note from the doctor's office and that is what's being provided to the school nurse. And the school nurse takes it from there. It's not one single form that says this is exactly what it is. Or if it's outside of athletics, when it comes through athletics, we do have a form that we use that our trainer does give the student and parents that is filled out by the doctor. But as far as I believe for in school students who have, you know, a concussion that's not related to sports, it's whatever the doctor has for a form that is turned in.
That's so helpful. Thank you.
And hopefully Lisa jumps back on and make sure that is correct.
Sounds good, though. Alright, so in lieu of Lisa's return, Karen, question?
Yeah, well, I just want to make sure. So we'll double check that that two thousand eleven was the last version of this policy update. And then we will combine for A and B into one. So we will hold off on voting on this until the twenty sixth?
Yes. So that's for the next agenda, Alita. Thank you so much, guys. Alright, next. Policy JFABD. Back to you, Karen.
Okay, this one, sorry, I just have to pull it up here. JFABD. Yes, so this is the policy on homeless students, enrollment rights and services. It really, we covered this last time, but it really was just cleaning up the the language, goes over the definition of a homeless student, the school of origin, enrollment dispute resolution, and then a liaison for the student. So this is just the the second read for this one.
Any, or rather, why don't we take a motion on this? Mike?
I will move to adopt policy JFABD as presented.
I'll second that. Any questions or discussion? I see Rich's hand.
Yeah, so I believe in our last meeting, member Gleason mentioned that or brought up the idea that everybody, every other student that's attends the school is going to be required to have record of immunizations. And we're going to have, if this policy, I think if I remember from the discussion last time, Superintendent Downing said, you know, this comes from like federal legislation or something. But it seems, it seems strange in the in the era of COVID. And, you know, there's polio in the water and in New York City, you know, because people aren't getting inoculations and stuff. Why would we let a student, if this is a public health regulation, I believe it's a state law, you can't attend school if you don't have records of taking your immunizations. Why would we let a student regardless of, I mean, it's a hardship, I get it, but you know, if they have measles or they have something in an immunocompromised child, you know, catches something that, you know, I I think it's a big risk for the school. And, you know, I ran it by some parents and their concern too. So everybody has empathy for the for the homeless child. I I think, you know, I read this pretty closely. It seems that the the, you know, if the school knows the student, you know, if they're previously enrolled, I think that's one thing, but if they're coming completely out of district and they have no records, I think this is one thing that perhaps we should think twice about.
Okay, thanks, Rich. I'm going to hear from Mike first and then to Karen.
Yep, I would just, I don't know if we discussed this the last time when Mr. Gleason brought this up, but there are families out there who have opted for religious exemptions that are also not immunized. So whether it's because of hardship or because of religious reasons, there are members in our community that are not vaccinated and we've accepted one segment of the population. I don't know why we wouldn't accept the other considering it is a hardship condition. So I'm fully prepared to vote on this tonight.
Okay, thanks, Mike. Go ahead, Karen.
I also, I also think there may be circumstances where where a student may come to us and is homeless and doesn't have access to those vaccination records for whatever set of extenuating circumstances. So I think it's really important to keep that in mind. It's not always going to be a family who's already established here and is suddenly homeless but has everything put together and ready for us. So I think we need to be careful about that.
Thanks, Karen. Go ahead, Joe.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I actually would like to echo my colleague, Mr. Echols sentiments in this regard. I couldn't concur more wholeheartedly, Mr. Echol, with his sentiment. In addition to that, I I would surmise that there are clearly enough votes for this policy to pass, but I am going to vote no on this policy. Not only for the reasons that Mr. Echol articulated, but for the fact that, you know, I know that this is an operational issue, but I I'm fairly well informed that, you know, our district spends an inordinate amount of time looking to assure that students who attend schools in our district actually reside in our district. And it just, again, it seems incongruent and inequitable and unequal that students who deem themselves homeless are exempt from the same sort of scrutiny and inquiries of students who are not. You know, if if we're not going to make inquiry, I mean, because a homeless student potentially could be residing not only outside of our district, but outside of our state. And there are border communities in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts that are educating children who are living outside of the confines of the territorial boundary of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. So it it seems an inordinate burden on our district to have to take these students in without any questions being asked or without any due diligence being pursued. So I I don't want to come off as a heartless slug, which in voting against this, but I'm sure some people think will think me that. But I did want to articulate my reasons for voting no. Thank you, Madam Chair.
I just want to go over to Lisa really quick because I see her hand.
I got logged off and someone back on, so I'm not sure where I missed, where I came in.
But Lisa, I want you to know that Tanya did a great job filling us in on the concussion protocol. So don't worry.
I apologize for that. It took me a little time to get back on. I clearly were talking about McKinsey Vento, which I cannot, I cannot state the law right now, but there are certain laws and regulations that State the law right now, but there are certain laws and regulations that Massachusetts has abide by. And that's what this is here. We are getting audited from the Massachusetts Department of Elementary Education on the Educational Stability Program. We get audited every five years as other school districts across um Massachusetts are audited. And these are the 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 areas of our policy that would not updated. They said if we updated to the M A S C. October two nineteen, two thousand nineteen policy, which is not what our current one is, that we would meet the regulations and not. Um, have to then um go back with Desi and explain why we don't. Secondly, I'd like to just say, when we talk about homeless, there's a lot of terminology, what homeless means. Homeless doesn't always mean that you don't have a roof over your head. It can mean doubling up. Um, living with a grandparent, um, et cetera. Um, me as the McKenty Vento liaison. There's an extensive interview process when this happens. And I also want to say that secondary, if somebody had, for example, as Mr. Echo indicated measles, of course, they would not be able to come in. That's a public health. Um, regulation that they would not be able to come into the school. Um, what this. But the Massachusetts law allows that because of their homelessness, we would not prevent them from getting the education that they deserve. Um, in a timely fashion until we can help facilitate them to get the medical home or those documentations. It also applies to military families in this in the policy as well. So it's the homeless. Military families as well and migrant workers that because of the traveling. Um, that we would not hinder them or prevent them from starting school in a timely fashion until we can get necessary paperwork. I hope that. Clarifies because I missed some of the conversation here, um, just to update that. Um. Thank you.
That is helpful. I'm going to go to Amy next.
I think Lisa made the point that I answered the question I was going to ask, which is. If we don't have this policy, are we going to be in compliance or out of compliance with a federal regulation? Because it seems like that's what's behind this, this um, you know.
Correct, we would be out of compliance.
Yeah, that that is really what I was trying to figure out because, you know, I don't think that we have. The liberty to debate whether we agree with that regu- that federal regulation or not. We need a policy to put us in compliance with it.
Correct.
Thanks.
And the audit is due by. I have it somewhere. I'll look for it while we're talking. I want to say it's the end of um October, the beginning of November that it that the audit. Everything has to be uploaded by that time.
Okay, thanks, Lisa. Uh, Rich.
Uh, Madam Chair, if I could direct a question to Nurse Gobecky. So just just so I understand, every resident that sends their child to our school or I guess any. Student is required to provide this documentation. But for students that can't. Do we what you you mentioned, like, for instance, measles. Uh, how would you know they didn't have measles? I mean, if they weren't presenting. It 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 just seems, it just seems like a contradiction where that we're asking. Taxpayers to. Jump through all these hoops to have their kids go to school and then, you know, a kid, sure, he the fault of their own or his or her own. You know, they don't, they don't have their records. What if, what would we do if, like, in COVID, for example, like, are we testing these kids before they come in? I I don't know. I I feel like. This is a a misguided policy where we're we're asking one thing of of people that. Are in the district and something different from from other folks. And I re- there's exceptions to everything. But it just, it doesn't, it doesn't sound like. It just sounds like a different set of rules for a different group of people. That's what.
So Rich, uh, yeah, Lisa, do you want to answer that?
I I I just want to state that, you know, our our protocols, right, that we have in place that students that are enrolling. Or um when they meet certain um grade levels require different immunizations, right? Seventh grade, tenth grade, we have other immunizations. And we track those and we we obtain them from them. When a new person comes into the school, we absolutely do that same process as um. Mike had mentioned that if somebody claims religious exemption, that's a regulation by Massachusetts that we have to abide by. Um, and that's something that we will um abide by because we have to. So regardless of um what immunizations they currently have. If they state, I don't, I'm not doing any more immunizations, I'm claiming religious exemption. Um, they have a right to come to school and we and the schools cannot do. Anything about that at this time. Um, that's that's just the Massachusetts regulations. Um, and that same true for homeless, military and migrant workers.
I would just say that we could debate the merits of this all day long, but this is actually. A law in the state of Massachusetts. It's a federal court case that has established. A a floor for us here. And so, Rich, you and I can disagree about the merits of this, but. This is a compliance issue. And if you want to fight it, I don't know that. School committee policy is the level we fight it at. I think you go to the state legislature to try to change the law.
No, I guess we can disagree on that. We have local control schools for a reason, but.
Break laws, right? We don't go against law.
I I don't think this one makes any sense.
No, I get it. I get that you don't, but I I'm wondering if if the discussion should continue around the merits of it or if. Um, you know, just keep in mind that this is a compliance issue. I I would go to Joe next.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chairman. Um, and again, I would again echo Mr. Uh, Echols sentiments. I did have two quick questions for Nurse Gobecky. Um. The first one has to do with the issue of compliance and I I'm fully and fairly sensitive to the issue of compliance. I just wonder as the liaison, if you could articulate for the committee. What would be the remedy or the sanction for noncompliance? Would it be the loss of federal funding? I mean, do we make that choice here that at this level saying, look, we choose not to adhere to that particular federal standard, ergo, we forfeit federal funding. Um, other than that, what other sanction would there be at least up on the federal level or do you, if you know? And I have a, I do have a second question that I wanted to ask, uh, Madam Chair.
Lisa, is that something you're prepared to answer?
I am not prepared to answer that, no.
No. Um, Kirk, do you know that if this um triggers?
I I would bring, I would bring in legal counsel to to answer that.
All right. But so the second question is, and it just, I wasn't sure if I heard this correctly from our nurse leader. Did you indicate in your presentation that the 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 requirements? For compliance with the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education? And maybe it, maybe I didn't hear it correctly, or maybe you misstate, you stated this, but did I just hear you say that the the onus is on the district? In order to put itself in compliance with the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. We are required to adopt the M A S C model policy?
With it's, they said in order to be compliant, we can accept the M A S C two thousand nineteen policy. That would, that would bring us into compliance with this regulation for the for the educational stability review. That we're undergoing right now.
All right. So just so it's clear on this, that what they're suggesting is that if we adopt the the model policy M A S C. They would deem that to be appropriate compliance. They're not saying that that's the actual policy that must be adopted. To to be in compliance, they're just saying that adoption of that particular policy will then put you in compliance. With the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. Or you could adopt an addition or a similar policy, which may not be the policy, but would still put us in compliance.
Yeah, they're saying that 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 particular year for the M A S C is acceptable, um, because they had the changes. Um, in there that they're requiring for two thousand, from the two thousand nineteen on, which we had an older policy, which is why we added.
All right, great. So it looks like Sharon might have her hand up.
I just wanted to, um. Uh, for clarification, because I feel like we're getting into the weeds a little bit here um with philosophical debate. But this policy is not suggesting that a student that is homeless can enter the into school and. Never be asked or required to provide any medical records or immunization records. What it is saying is that a student who is homeless and doesn't have access to this information can start. School in our district and that we will still work on getting that information. Or if they don't have um the immunization and they are. Not choosing religious exemption, um, that they will get have access to those immunizations to get. Up to date. Even with a religious exemption, you can't just come into school and say, oh, I I'm choosing not to do this. For religious reasons, you have to have documentation signed by your pediatrician. Um, so this is not. Um, giving these families. An open ended, um. It it's not exempting them from the uh from the requirements to provide information. It's just allowing them to be started. Um, when they're in a difficult situation and they may not have immediate access or ever have access to those records.
All right, great. So I think we've had um a complete discussion here. If I'm not mistaken, I'm going to move to the vote. And so I will vote yes. Amy Vessels.
Yes.
Maureen.
Yes.
Uh, Joe.
No.
Sharon.
Yes.
That was Cooper. Thanks, Sharon. Uh, Mike?
Yes.
Rich?
No.
Amy Cohen?
Yes.
Karen?
I apologize, I hit unmute too soon. Cooper voted yes. I am very sorry about that.
Oh, no problem. Thanks, Karen. Brett?
Yes.
All right, guys, I think that was everybody. So thank you very much. The policy has passed and Lisa, you can um add that to your audit. Monster pile of work that I'm sure that requires. Thanks, everyone. All right, guys, let's move on to the M R E Nature's Classroom Field Trip Approval and I'd go right to Mike's, excuse me, for a motion.
I move to approve the Mary Rollinson's fifth grade Nature's Classroom Field Trip to Ocean Park, Maine on October seventeenth through October twenty first. Uh, which includes eighty seven students and eleven chaperones in attendance.
I'll second that. Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll go to the vote. Amy Vessels?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Maureen?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Sharon?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Amy Cohen?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
And Rich?
Yes.
And Karen?
Yes.
Okay, so yay, M R E. Have a fantastic time at Nature's Classroom. That's really exciting for all of you. Uh, we will now go to the approval of the strategic plan update. Which was those two school safety items that Kirk presented at our last meeting. Um, just kind of tweaking the strategic plan, which he says he will come to us anytime there is a substantive substantive change. In the strategic plan for approval. So Mike, I turn to you for a motion.
Move to approve the strategic plan update to include uh to review of school safety and develop priority actions. As district and for. Individual schools and improve and sustain physical environments that promote healthy and vibrant learning conditions in all buildings.
I second that. Any discussion? All right, let's go to Karen first.
Yep.
Uh, Brett?
Yes.
Amy Cohen?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Sharon?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Maureen?
Yes.
Amy Vessels?
Yes.
And if I didn't say myself yet, I say yes. I can't remember. Uh, so that's fantastic, Kirk. Thanks so much for um continuing to include us in that really important work.
Very welcome, Madam Chair.
Um, so without objection, everyone, I'd like to uh just leapfrog the protocol conversation and go to the superintendent goals. Um, seeing no objection, I'll come right back to the protocols and the school committee goals. But let's move to the superintendent's goals to approve what we heard last meeting. So Mike, to you.
Move to approve the two thousand twenty two to two thousand twenty three superintendent goals as presented.
Can I get a different second?
Second.
Yes, Sharon, thank you. Any discussion on the superintendent goals? All right, let's go for the vote. Amy Vessels?
Yes.
Maureen?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Sharon?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
Amy Cohen?
Yes.
Karen?
Yep.
Brett?
Yes.
Myself, yes. That is unanimous. Fantastic, Kirk. Such great work there still.
Thank you for your support.
Mike, you have a question or comment?
Nope, just a comment. In addition to my yes vote, I was going to say it during the vote. I just want to wish the superintendent the very best of luck in achieving as many of these goals as as possible. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Horash. Swing for the fences.
Uh, Mr. Mr. Horash, we have been uh vetting the strategic plan with the schools. And stealing language directly from you, sir, that we were going to be audacious in executing this vision.
Fantastic.
All right, great. So. Kirk, are there any of the subcommittee um reports that you are hoping to get in on? Or are you all set?
Uh, no, Madam Chair, I think the points of business uh that most pertain to. The work I need to do have been addressed for the evening. So if you don't mind, if if Ms. Friend and I can adjourn so we can. Uh, attend to the rest of our activities, I would appreciate that.
Yeah, we do appreciate Ross staying on board to assist.
Yes, thank you. And I believe Ms. Maroni is in the uh the room as well. So uh, we we have capable people here.
Yay, Pat. Um, so guys, have a great time at that conference. Bring back all of their great ideas.
Great, thank you. Good night, everybody.
Thank you.
All right, everybody, I am going to bump back up to the school committee goals. Then we will do school committee protocol approval. Um, which we discussed quite a bit in the last couple of meetings, and then we'll move to the subcommittee reports to wrap this up. So. Um, school committee goals. I am going to apologize to you guys in advance that I just failed to get this to Alita. So here they are. Can you guys see my uh screen? Mike and Amy, yeah, okay. I can see Cohen Vessels and Horash right now. That's it. Um, so what I'm going to do, actually what I wanted to do. Hold on. I want to put it in the chat. This is the Google Doc that is our goals. And Alita, you could also take that document and add it to the meeting materials. If you don't mind, thank you.
Yeah, you'll need to open up access.
Oh, thank you. Okay, got it, got it. Doing now. Okay, guys, refresh and that should be um. Accessible to you. What I think um would be prudent is if I gave everybody about four minutes, a minute per goal, thereabouts. Just review through the main goals. And um then we can bring forth discussion.
Leah, could I ask a question? Process question? Are, is all the um. Is all of the text appearing in each one of these boxes?
Um, it is.
Okay.
Uh, so like, Rich, on my screen right now that I'm sharing.
Yeah.
This action step, if you click on the box, it should.
It doesn't expand for me. I don't, maybe it, that's because I'm using Safari. I don't.
It's not expanding for me either.
Yeah, same.
But if you guys double click it, will it let you double click?
Well, I think it's because we're view only, Leah. If you promise not to just to screw it up, can we? See if that helps.
Yes. Uh, refresh. And hopefully that will help. And hopefully that will help. All right, so I'm just gonna, I'm gonna continue to give you guys a few minutes to look this over. Mike, you have a question?
Yes, um, I don't know if anyone else had the same question, but can you just clarify the difference between the goal designer and the goalkeeper?
Yeah, so like, the goal designer is the whoever came up with it, and it was normally a subcommittee. But sometimes um the chairperson is given a goal, and so a subcommittee could design a goal that is perhaps best addressed by someone else other than them. I don't actually see any of those here. So I think whoever the goal designer is, is going to be the kind of keeper or the person who tracks it throughout the year.
Could the goal designer be like Dear J or something if it's kind of runs across committees kind of thing?
It could, or like, the designer could be the policy subcommittee and the and the keeper could be Dear J.
Leah, my cat already deleted something, so I had to Ctrl-Z. You might need to take this power away from us.
Don't ruin it. You can do it. Maybe just one more minute to peruse, and then we're gonna have the chairpeople take over. Your reading. What I would like to do is go uh ask each subcommittee chairperson to just quickly speak to the the stated goal. And then people can ask clarifying questions if um that is necessary. So let's start with um communication, and forgive me, guys, who's your chair? Amy and Sharon?
Amy is the de facto chair.
Okey-dokey. So Amy Vessels, um, just give us a quick rundown here.
So we just um, we talked about how we could get more of the information from our meetings and stuff out to the community. Because we uh we felt like there was often um presentations and things that were would be very useful to people in the community and unless you watched the school committee meeting, you might not get that information. Um, and so we were looking at possibly making a newsletter to try to give some soundbites or like just some some of the stuff that we found really important that we wanted to make sure people saw. Um, you know, uh, throughout the year. Sharon, do you wanna add to that?
No, I think you summed it up nicely.
Any questions? And I cannot see your uh faces, so you'll have to just jump in. Hearing none, we'll move on to the next committee, and that's budget and warrant, and I think the chair is Rich.
Oh, yeah, just one question for um Amy Vessels. Is um is your committee like uh are you guys like a Ohio State? So you're like, I think that's who it is, the the Ohio State University. We have to use the in front of the school. Is that why it says the communications subcommittee?
That's correct.
Joe, Joe, clarify that for me if I blew up that sports reference. But anyway, uh, so you know, one of our, uh, one, I think kind of our main overarching goal is just to help demystify the finances. Uh, and it really, from my perspective, and I think I speak for our subcommittee. You know, it's really just creating more accessible reporting that is more prescriptive in how it tells people what what it is that it's trying to communicate. So it's not just tabularized data. You know, perhaps it has color coding on it, a trending data where appropriate. Stuff that's gonna make it contextual so that when you're looking at the key performance indicators or or any other type of data set, it's clear what it is it's trying to communicate. And, you know, I think our superintendent took a huge step forward last year uh in the way he addressed um how the assessments are calculated uh and all the associated assumptions and everything that went along with that. Um, and I think he said he's gonna put that up on the site, too. So um, you know, we can kind of get out of the whole discussion of what is um what is, you know, you know, just answering the same questions over and over again. Um, so, you know, a lot of our goals are pretty much the same as last year, just kind of updated for this year. Some of the other ones were um ensuring that, again, on the communication lines, that what's in the budget linking that to what's in the strategic plan. And of course, now that we have a strategic plan, it's much easier to do that. Um, and I think the, I'm I'm interested to see how the the administration continues to to link those two and 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 show the data how it supports it. Um, you know, as a com- as a subcommittee, we wanna keep inviting all the stakeholders that, you know, again, uh, bringing them to the table, surfing those questions early. So inviting people from the finance committee, you know, if if select board members can come. Um, we don't typically get town administrators, but of course, they'd be welcome, too. Um, and then um the final piece is taking a a deeper look at the other post-employment benefits liability. Um, structuring a conversation around that. We realize that uh with the new finance director, there's quite a steep learning curve there. Um, but we do have a quite a large O P E B liability, unfunded O P E B liability, like a lot of other school districts, so you know, we need to to think about having a uh a more long-term plan. And so that's one thing that we're hoping that the district will address this year. Um, did I miss anything, Mike or Brett? Um, Maureen hasn't joined us in a in a meeting yet, but did you guys have anything to add?
Nope, that was perfect. Thank you, Rich.
Mike, perfect.
Yeah.
You're gonna make me blush.
Um, all right, so our next committee is policy. So I'll throw it over to Karen.
Great, thanks. Uh, so policy, this is, this is really a continuation of the work that we did last year in terms of reviewing revising policies to ensure they're up to date um with national law, but also um to make sure they're representative of the Nishoba community and our commitment to diversity, equity, and inclusion. Um, so, and it connects pretty directly to the um culture and belonging strategic objective theme in terms of ensuring equitable opportunities and outcomes for all. Um, so, you know, we will work with um in the superintendent, work with the school committee, and also try to work a little bit more with Dear J. I know Dear J's focus last year was a lot more on other pieces that they were working on, but we're hoping we can pull them in a little bit more um, this year to support this goal.
Awesome, thanks, Karen. I do see Amy's hand.
Yeah, I was just curious as to whether the timing of the um equity audit that's being done would be able to be incorporated into like, would inform the work that this subcommittee is doing, or whether that's something that would be informing next year's work?
Yeah, possibly.
Is that part of your discussion at all, or?
We didn't, we did not discuss that, no, but it's possible.
Yeah, and I think that as the administrative team shines a light on that, we need to find a vendor first. And I know that many school districts are saddling up, but uh with various vendors, but we have not yet. So as soon as Kirk brings it online, I'm sure that it will require policy shifting, and and that's where policy can come in, and Dear J, too. So that kind of points towards Sharon. So I would actually point out that there there is some overlapping work here where the subcommittees should be communicating with one another. Um, maybe even going to each other's meetings when necessary so that um we can make sure that there are no gaps. Right? So like, if the budget and warrant wants to increase visibility um and create better education for the community, then the communications subcommittee would prioritize that in a monthly communication, et cetera. So there's definitely, you know, knowing what the other subcommittees are prioritizing in their work. Um, us all knowing what we're all doing is really important. Um, okay, so we'll go over to P S C, and uh Mike, I'll turn it over to you.
Sure, Personnel's goals um centered around uh two pieces. The first one um is to sort of continue what Personnel did last year, which was um to focus on the mid-cycle and the summit of evaluation, which is gonna hopefully include a couple of uh training sessions, which will serve as refreshers for most of us. Um, we did add a component of um hoping to establish the goal of getting full participation by the school committee so that our summit of evaluation is as representative as possible. Um, uh, in addition to that goal, which we've already sort of um worked towards, was to um, work with the superintendent to establish his goals. Um, uh, again, that's sort of um has been established. The second, the second of the two goals was to revise the school committee manual. That hasn't been looked at in probably three years. Um, and update it so that um we can adopt it so that it's ready for our uh next batch of members in uh in May.
Awesome. Thanks, Mike. Um, all right, so let me just pull this out of the way. I'm gonna stop sharing. I wonder um if I could poll the committee very quickly. Uh, we could uh push a motion to approve these to our next meeting. Or if you are feeling comfortable and want to spend this now, we can do it. We can vote now. Those are your two options. So if you could just give me a thumbs up, meaning you would like to vote on these tonight. Thumbs down, let's put it off. I see Joe's thumbs up. Everybody's got thumbs up. All right, so we're looking to move forward and um and approve these goals for our committee this year. Mike, do you have a a uh motion on this already? Constructed, or do you think you can fashion one on the fly?
I I do, yeah. Um uh, oops, sorry, gotta slide up here.
While we're waiting for Mike, I wanna know how Joe figured out how to do a thumbs up instead of a raising of a hand.
That's one of the icons.
Well, anyway, I can't really find one. I'll just fashion it. Um, I'll move to accept the two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three school committee goals as presented.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Rich, gotcha. Any further discussion?
Sorry, can I ask a newbie question?
Please.
Um, how do we review ourselves on these? I see the benchmarks, but like, do we just review us? Or, okay.
Yes, and uh the voters can use this to hold us accountable.
Okay, got it. Thank you.
Yeah. All right, any other questions now? All right, let's take the vote. I'm gonna go with Brett first.
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Amy Cohen?
Yes.
Rich Eckel?
Yes.
Sharon?
Yes.
Karen?
Yep.
Amy Vessels?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Maureen?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
And I think that's everybody. That's a unanimous vote for our goal setting. Very good people. Um, all right, let me get my next slide ready. The next item up on our agenda is to approve the protocols that we discussed last week. So what I did was I took the document and um I just condensed it down to a list, and I can show that now. Actually, good gracious, hold on. Sorry, guys. I'm actually going to put this in the chat for you guys so that you can all have it. As well, and then again, Alita, um, hoping that you can also add that to the materials. So this is what we came up with the last time that we were together. Um, none of this should be very new to you, but what I'd like to do is give you about three minutes to just scroll through the document and make sure you don't have any questions. I will say the highlighted portion is something that we did actually agree to at the last meeting. Um, but I just wanted to make sure that you guys are okay with it. Uh, because this is really about the whole emailing thing, and I don't think that we actually talked about that in any detail. So that's why it's highlighted, just to make sure I called it out.
Leah, I think the thing that you shared with us is different than what's on the screen.
Is you, if you scroll all the way to like the sixth page, Amy? No? Can anybody else see this? Mike can see it.
Uh, we can see what you're sharing. There's there's eight on the screen.
Yeah, there's the, yeah, there's a bunch of you in the document.
All right, I see it. It's page, page like twelve. Got it.
There you go.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. So this is just the working document. It has all the versions in it that we've been using.
I have a question. Um, official voice of the schools. I I think the intent is emails. I think you mean the official voice of the school committee, right?
Oh, yeah, totally. That's what it's supposed to say.
Is this kind of a summary, this document you're sharing?
This is the new protocol list. So like, we we use this as the working document earlier.
Yeah.
And so what I do is I took the right-hand column, all the things that we decided, and I just put it into one list.
And that's what's at the top?
What?
This is, this is a summary of like the
These are all the things that we agreed to at this very bottom chart.
Yeah, all right. And and I guess by official voice, just for my own clarification, I don't have a problem with it, but I think you mean any official, like, if if we do like a press release, or obviously the emails, responding to the emails. I think the protocol for that is if it comes to you directly, you know, you respond to it. Right? But if it goes to the N R S C, then you'll respond to it.
That's right.
Is there anything else I'm thinking about besides emails and and uh and like P R? I mean, I guess if you're in a at a public meeting, you don't wanna represent that you speak for the committee, but that's, I think, implicit in this.
Yes, because that is actually um the protocol right above it says that.
Okay.
Yeah, I know, it's awkward, but um, there it is. That's uh, that number five is in the model protocols that we looked at, and it's also in our previous version of the protocols. And so we just um, we swept it in, and so I just wanted to make sure everybody was cool with it. Or you guys can bring up other things, too. Go ahead, Amy. Cohen.
Yeah, I I don't wanna drag out this discussion anymore, but I just wonder if it would help clarify number five by adding some words after a school committee that, so it reads, school committee members recognize the chairperson as the official voice of the school committee. Um I had it in my head, and something like the, and that the chairperson will respond on behalf of the committee to emails addressed to to NRSD at NRC dot com, something like that, something more concise. I had it at first and then it escaped me, but and the chairperson will respond to any email addressed to NRSD will be responsible for responding to emails addressed to the committee. I just feel like that might help clarify this protocol.
I think Joe's hands up. Go ahead, Joe.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I was actually going to take exception with Ms. Cohen's addition to that. I actually really thought that the way that you had crafted it originally was all that we really need or what we should have, because as official spokesperson, it's more than just responding to emails. You may be asked to respond to pending lawsuits against the district from local news agencies. You would always, the chair would always speak on behalf of the committee in all circumstances and 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 every continue, every particular aspect of what we do as a committee. So, you know, I think when we added, I just gonna suggest that adding in the angle of an email to sort of narrowing the focus and scope of your authority in that regard. And I always envision the chair as being, you know, anything that you have to ask of the district committee, you ask for the chair, the chair responds, whether it be by email, be voice, voice, you know, interview, press release, or what have you. So I kind of thought it was more encompassing before we had in that line.
Okay, can, can you give me a thumbs up if you agree with Joe? I'm gonna say, yeah. Yeah, so I feel like the the majority has it there.
It's good intent by by Ms. Cohen.
Yeah, but I do understand that we don't want to limit it just to emails.
Well, I think I just the will of the committee is fine with me, but I think the word and doesn't limit it personally. I think it just clarifies and keeps the original intent, but.
Joe, what do you feel about that and?
With due respect to my fellow committee member, I would say that less is more and you're simply gilding the lily. I think that the official voice of the school committee has been tried and true for decades upon decades in this Commonwealth. I just think less is more in this particular case. And I think everybody on this committee who's here, we're back 10 of our 11 members here, we all understand that in all circumstances, email, non email, press release, interviews, what have you, Madam Chair speaks for our committee.
Okay, thanks, Joe. I can't really see all of you, but I'm thinking maybe are we good with questions? Yeah, Mike, you want to go for a motion here?
Okay, so I will move to accept the 2000 geez, I gotta make sure that this is dated. I'll move to accept the 2022, 2023 Nishoba Regional School Committee protocols as presented.
I'll second that. Any further discussion? All right, seeing none, let's go for the vote. Amy Vessels?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Maureen?
Yes.
Sharon?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
Amy Cohen?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
And Brett?
Yes.
Fantastic. Thanks, everybody. All right. Good gracious, bear with me. All right, so Alita, if you could be so kind just to add those things to the meeting minutes, that would be awesome. Thanks so much.
Leah, do you want to make sure that you changed the permissions?
I did.
Before I put it in the packet so that not everybody can edit it.
Oh, okay.
First one, the goals, you changed it so anybody can edit it.
Right. I thought you would just make it a PDF, but do you want me to just?
I can make it a PDF.
Yeah, just do that. That would be awesome. You're so fancy. Thanks, Alita. All right, everybody, we're gonna head now over to subcommittee reports. And we will begin with budget and warrant, Mr. Echol.
We are only meeting monthly and we already met this month, so we will meet again next month on the Monday before the first school committee meeting next month.
Great. Thanks, Rich. Communication Subcommittee?
Yes, so we met before the last meeting and talked about our goals. And now we're meeting again before the October 12th meeting.
Excellent. NRHS School Building Committee?
Thank you, Madam Chair. In addition to the information that I provided earlier, I will let the committee know that at a meeting on the 20th, the committee did vote to approve the superintendent, we should be voted to approve authorization superintendent to enter into any type of purchase orders, modifications and changes to current purchase orders and what have you, up to the sum of $25,000. In addition to that, on a more administrative note, we did add Ms. Friend as the newest non-voting advisory member to the committee. And just to sort of put a ribbon on what I said earlier regarding the meeting of the 19th, I will send each of the members of the committee who are not part of the school building committee the five proposed design schemes for your review. And you can check out our meeting materials. You can check out the video as well. There was a long discussion provided by our architect on the configuration designs. I will tell you that committee tends to be or seems to be leaning towards one of the several designs that preserves the current school football field. Some of the designs do require taking up some of the space on the football field, so I don't know what the vote's going to be on the 18th, but that is where we're going. And I will send out those design schemes to each one of you either tonight or tomorrow. Thank you.
And Joe, would you like to illuminate the community forum information for us?
Oh, I'm sorry. I think I meant, I know, you know, I did not mention this the last time. Yes, I apologize, Madam Chair. Yes. Our next fourth community forum will be held on October 11th at 6:00 PM at the high school. We had originally planned on having the first week of October, but there are some high holidays of the Jewish faith that week, so they wanted to avoid that and out of respect for those of the Jewish faith. And we are on for the 11th, 6:00 PM. I would actually encourage you to encourage as many people to attend, be it in person or remotely. I think this is, we didn't, I will be the first one. We didn't have a great attendance at our last meeting, though I know the timing of it was part of the problem. So if you know anybody that's interested, please have them come out on October 11th. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thanks so much, Joe. Go ahead, Amy. I see a golden hand, Amy Cohen.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that that I understand that the process that's being laid out because on October 18th, the school building committee is going to be voting to approve the preliminary design package, but we're also going to be choosing which option goes into that package. Is that correct?
Yeah, the the actual terminology is preferred schematic report and included within that report.
I knew I was messing that up.
Included within that report will be the choice of the district, the district, the school building committee as to which design we're going to pursue as far as the building is concerned. So as I indicated before, you know, as you well know, Amy, that I think we're definitely leaning towards a new build as opposed to an addition of renovation. So that's part of the preferred schematic report, the design option.
Okay, I'm gonna follow up with you offline because I have more questions, but I want to take up the school committee's time. Right, thank you.
But the the long and short of it is the SBC is gonna vote a recommendation on the 18th that they will then bring to us on the 19th. The school committee is the actual authority. And so you all will take the recommendation of the SBC and decide whether or not you agree with the one option they've chosen. I would also say to anybody in the community who's watching or listening that we are going to be communicating quite a bit over the course of the next few months, both in the newspapers and through school email and through social media to make sure that everybody knows about that public forum, because everyone is welcome to come and ask questions. This is a really exciting, really important moment for the Nishoba Public Schools. A high school is so critical to every town's growth and success, so I invite everybody to be a part of that conversation. Either on the 11th, come to the SBC on the 18th, or come to our meeting on the 19th. Thanks, Joe, for shouldering all of this. We really appreciate it. Did I lose Joe? No. Yes?
No, I'm right here.
Screens are all messed up. There you are, Joe. Okay, good. Okay, so let's move on to Personnel. Mike?
Well, the school committee will recall that Personnel reported that we met on the 7th of September to help to craft and draft the superintendent's goals. So that was our, that was sort of the lion's share of our meeting time, but we had a delightful little meeting on last Thursday, was it? I believe it was last Thursday where we just finalized our goals, which were included in today's presentation. So our next meeting is on Monday, the 3rd.
And over to Policy.
Policy has not met since our last meeting. We have a meeting scheduled in October, so we'll report.
Thanks, Karen. Maureen, probably nothing for audit advisory, but I don't want to squelch your opportunity here.
Yeah, no, nothing. I've talked with the other members. But we do have an open spot for the stove rep that we're trying to get filled. So if there's any interest there that will get voted in by the select board, I believe. And we're going to try to meet. We wanted to give it a little time to see if we could get a stove rep. But otherwise, we're gonna try to meet soon, next month, I believe.
Awesome. Dear J Advisory?
No report.
Great, thanks, Sharon. And CPAC?
I reached out to CPAC. I've not heard back yet, so I'm hoping I will soon. I did not see any listed meetings coming up, so no real report yet.
So I'm not sure. Thanks, Karen. I'm not sure if this is allowable. I know that we have one other advisory committee that is not on the agenda, and maybe Alita, we could just add it back on because things are picking up with it, and that's the RACAC, the Regional Agreement Amendment Advisory Committee. They are meeting Monday night. And I will be in attendance. Sharon will hopefully be in attendance. Anybody else can join us by Zoom. We are finalizing the regional agreement changes, and I did blind copy you all on those meeting materials for Monday night's meeting today. Alita?
I just want to remind everybody that October 10th is a state holiday. So keep that in mind with your 48 hours posting. So, Rich, you won't be able to hold a meeting that day. It's the Monday before the school committee meeting.
Yeah, what do we decide on that, Mike? Now I forget.
So just keep that in mind for all the subcommittees with their 48 hours. You can't count Monday.
Okay, we can connect offline about that.
Thanks, Alita.
Thank you, Alita.
Okay, items for next agenda? Oh, brother, that's the one thing I don't have handy. The plan.
I got it, Leah.
Can you share? Awesome. Thanks, Alita. Mike?
Just as a reminder, we were talking about maybe getting kind of a summary of the most recent results from the Youth Risk Behavior Survey.
Yeah, so that's gonna need to go.
And I don't know that that's anything that's pressing, but I would love to hear an update.
So remember, we have this new format for the planning calendar. All right. Alita, did you happen to add in the health and wellness survey presentation somewhere? Or can we put that in the parking lot? And then when I meet with Kirk on Wednesday, we can discuss when that's best placed. I know that Sharon has sent something my way to bring up to Kirk on our Wednesday meeting. Remember that anytime you guys have something that's not super pressing, that you just want to throw onto his radar, you can funnel it to me before that Wednesday meeting, and I have a running list that I bring to those meetings with me. All right, so it looks like this next meeting is not too heavy. I know that Mr. Malkarren, you will be providing us a little intro on your entry plan, not the findings, but maybe some process details.
That is correct. Just timeline and highlights of what's, what's been done, what's coming. And then also Mrs. Friend, I think, is joining me at the same time to present hers.
Excellent.
I think you can remember finalized school committee goals from unfinished business, right?
Yeah, very good. Thanks, Alita. It says, School Committee Approval of Educational Plan. Ross, would you know what that is?
I believe that might be related to the high school.
Yeah. Okay, like the the new high school, like the
So I know that they've been working on the educational plan with the consultant. I can't remember the name off the top of my head. But that's the work that's been done previously, so let me, let me make sure that we reach out with clarification prior to that meeting.
That'd be great. All right, and then we have the concussion policy. Anything else you guys want to add? Not seeing anything right now, but of course, Faith Thing jumps in. Let me know. Happy to add that. Thank you, Alita, for sharing. And that brings us to the moment we've all dreaded all night. It's so hard to see us go. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved to.
Yes. Very good. There's no discussion needed. Let's go to the vote. Amy Vessels?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Maureen?
Yes.
Sharon?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
And Brett?
Yes.
Pat and Ross, Alita, thanks so much.
We seconded that, Leah.
Amy did.